All right, welcome to our January 2nd, 2024 agenda briefing. I'll call and meet the order, Ms. Barbara will have the implication. Commissioner Fosher had pledged allegiance and the approval of amendments and discussion of adjustment of the agenda.
Mr. Cracker. Okay, thanks, sir. One item, the first item is remove number six off of the consent agenda. That'll be under new business. We'll have to recess the Board of Commissioners and convene the Board of Adjustments to establish that public hearing for the Board of Adjustments and then reconvene, then recess the Board of Adjustments or reconvene, so that needs to come out from another.
That was which number?
Number six.
I don't see how.
Yeah. All right, and then have they got these two handouts?
They do not yet.
Could you please pass these out? Now, on the, on the Board of Adjustments, after that, do I need to?
You reconvene the Board of Commissioners.
And you can reset.
Recess, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right. That only one that we're taking off?
Uh, we're adding this memo just handed out. This is back when we met with EMS at their last budget with their departmental meeting. We told them if there was an improvement in their collection rates, that we would allow another station to shift to the 2472 mid-year. Uh, this is a memo detailing that and the shift in salaries and the additional cost to shift those employees to 2472 off the Kelly schedule. I don't think there's a required budget amendment at this time. There's enough money in their budget to handle it, but I do have to notify you that if you're going to allow us to adjust the pay plan to accommodate that change. And this was something that the Commissioners, we had told them at, during the budget process. They had asked for this, but we held back on it to look at their collections. And now, based on y'all giving approval, I'd look, I would want to take another look at those collections again before we allow it to go past me. But I'm asking for this. Dave Cudaback is asking for it to move forward. One of these positions is already in the budget, is a vacant position. He's held it vacant, so anticipating this move. So this is a, a huge plus for our EMS department because it's easier to recruit staff to go to this schedule. And you know, the county some years ago started allowing us to move into, just moving the whole department into a 2472 schedule, which is what all our competitors use, is cost prohibitive. So we've been easing into it a little bit at a time, over time. So this would just be another step in that direction.
And this would be at the station on, uh, six or whatever.
Six and eight.
Yeah, stations, uh.
That's the busiest station of any of that.
This would be the fourth station, which would be Medic Seven.
Did I understand you to say that you had taken a look at their collections and their collections?
We had before Christmas, but I would like to take another look at those before I would allow it. How, how was it looking before Christmas?
Honestly, as a whole, retracting the book, however, if you look at it monthly, there's a decline. Um, we, we just are putting in place as of today, effective today, a new collection agency. So I would anticipate our collections to start going back up.
Have we ever had a collection agency before?
Yes, ma'am. We've not had a collection agency since May.
But that's not our problem. We were not notified that the collection agency had gone out of business. So there was a time span there where, before it was called, that we were not.
We've had agencies, I don't know whether you would call them a collection agency or not.
And this is the collection agency that's going after a repayment in arrears.
Correct.
This is not our billing agency. This is the collection agency that backs up that.
So we still have the same billing agency?
Yes.
And are those collections up?
Uh, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure if I can speak to that.
We'd have to double check.
Because, you know, as we recall, we had an issue last year on actually the billing company. And then we switched to another company.
Air methods is our.
Fourth one.
Do we now?
That's about the fourth one, I believe.
Well, I know, and they keep going out of business, don't they?
It's, I guess it's a whole.
This would be looking at that again and being an improvement, because that was one of the requirements when we spoke, you know, when they were told that last budget. So I'd want to verify that.
So you want approval based upon your, taking another look at it?
Continuing upon our, us looking at it again.
And if you don't, might I add, this is approval to add three positions to their position count. So they're at eighty-six currently, so we would be upping their account to eighty-nine. That's why we're bringing it to you as well, because we have to have your permission to do that.
Adjust the pay for it.
I ain't got a problem with that.
Moving forward, this is a service we've got to provide.
And one question, what does they, our collection agency, what percentage do they charge? I know they're usually high.
I, I'll have to, I'll have to verify that with the Commissioner.
Because I've used them, you know, in the past on collection, and they get more than the person.
I'll find that out.
All right, and then one more. Uh, I've got one add-on, um, budget amendment to put under number three for add additional budget amendment. It's for, um, a new vehicle for our County Manager's Office, Commissioner's vehicle. And the thought process behind this is we are in need of a new mail courier truck. We would just purchase a new vehicle. The one here has got some miles on it. We're making multiple trips to Washington. I know we have at least three trips to Washington this year already planned that I see long distance travel. The suspension on the rear of the one we have now is out. It's going to have to go into the dealership to be repaired. But upon that, getting the truck back, we would shift these trucks down. The one we have now, once it's repaired, would go to our existing Industries Coordinator. The one at existing Industries would go to Public Affairs. The one at Public Affairs would go to the airport, and the one at the airport would be retired, which is like a 2002 model. Um, and then we're going to take a truck out of IT that they are no longer using and shift it to the mail courier. So we're, we're not adding a vehicle to our list, we'd be replacing a vehicle. And this is a used vehicle.
Any questions?
And that would be under budget amendments.
Not on that, Ms. Chairman, but where were we placing this EMS memo?
That would be a number, put it as number eleven under the consent.
Okay. And the vehicle would be number twelve?
Well, the vehicle goes under budget amendments.
Okay, I got you.
Number three. All right, and that's all the adjustments.
All right. Uh, so we'll go on to budget amendments?
Yes.
Good morning, happy new year to everybody.
Same to you.
So we'll start with number two thirty-four, and this is for EMS. So we would like to appropriate additional funds from our ARPA funds to purchase, um, it's actually increased cost for our defibrillators and our extrication equipment. So we need to increase that appropriation by a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight dollars. And that is coming out of our ARPA funding. Number two thirty-nine is from nine one one. This is to implement the priority dispatch, emergency fire dispatch software and training. This was actually appropriated or approved in last year's CIP, um, so it did not roll over into this year. So they would like to appropriate that so they can move forward with that project. Number two forty, this is from Cooperative Extension. This is the Master Gardener program. They actually were operating outside of Cooperative Extension and would like to roll that program and that, um, that account into their budget. So this is to recognize that revenue of fourteen thousand four forty-five sixty-nine. So all of those, um, program expenses can run through them. Number two forty-four is to appropriate rope funding of two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This, this is just a pass-through grant. We receive this every year. Number two forty-seven is for animal control. Due to staffing shortages, regular full-time employees are continuing to have to work overtime and holidays. So they're just moving funds from their salaries and wages to cover their holiday and overtime pay. And that's for twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. Number two fifty is for the Sheriff's Office. This is to move funds from the SWAT line items. It's moving it from non-capital to their capital line item for equipment of fourteen thousand seven twenty-eight. That's to purchase two rifles for their team. Number two fifty-two is for social services. This is to move seventy thousand from direct service allocations to training. This is because their in-service training has become more available now, and they would like to attend more of that. And we also get fifty percent reimbursement. Number two fifty-seven is for the Sheriff's Office. This is to appropriate six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents for insurance and recovery proceeds for damage to a vehicle. Number two fifty-eight is also for the Sheriff's Office. This is to appropriate five thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents for insurance proceeds for damage to a vehicle. As well as two fifty-nine for fourteen thirty-eight fourteen, also Sheriff's Office and damage to a vehicle. And the last one is for the Sheriff's Office. And this is just to appropriate seized property funds of thirty-three thousand one hundred two dollars and thirty-one cents to their office supply non-capital line item. And then we are adding budget amendment two sixty-four, which the County Manager has already gone over for the purchase of the vehicle for seventy-eight five. And that is all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, number four is a motion to permit the Wayne County Public Library to apply for the Digital Champion Grant. Just notifying the Board that, uh, this is a grant that they're going to apply for. It's a four hundred thousand dollar request, and, uh, this would allow the grant writer to move forward with the grant application on behalf of the public library. And then also, number five is a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Derby Ridge subdivision. And I think our planning director is here to discuss it.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Happy New Year. Yes, Derby Ridge, this is a preliminary plat. This is, um, let me put it out here. This is actually the beginning of the process for subdivision. So first step of approval is the preliminary, then you'll see it later. Probably this one will come back in stages or in phases with final plats. But as you can see, it's a rather, rather large plat. It's a hundred and twenty-six lots on Stoney Creek Church Road. Is kind of in that segment between Paytown Road or one eleven and, um, Wayne Memorial Drive.
Some of the right, correct.
Yeah, on the right. When you turn right on Stoney Creek from one eleven, it'll be on the right, kind of about halfway down across from Lake of Shire.
That kind of backs up to, um, Mears Bluff on those sides.
It sure does.
Is it going to, but it's not going to tie in through the creek or nothing, is it?
It will not. Yeah, this is, uh, they did have a hundred and twenty-six lots proposed. Their average lot size is about twenty-seven thousand four hundred square feet, which is a little bit over half an acre, about six tenths of an acre. Um, and in this case, because of the number of lots, they do have two access points on to, um, Stoney Creek Church Road, two full-service access. So it'll be two ways in and out of the subdivision. And then there is some cross-connection within the subdivision as well. And Planning Board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval.
Good work. Any questions? It's on the route before you get to Lake of Shire. Who's the, who's the developer of this?
This is, um, it's called CE2 LLC, um, out of Goldsboro. They're, um, I can't think.
Developed who?
Here it's blocked.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, if you'll hang tight right there just a moment. Uh, we removed six out to new business. That's a Board of Adjustment, establish a public hearing for Board of Adjustment hearing on a special use permit for Hackberry Solar Energy Facility. Number seven, moving on to number seven's Berry again with a approval for final plat of Edgerton Farms Estate. Number seven, moving on to number seven is Berry again with a approval for final plat of Edgerton Farms Estate, Section 4.
All right, yeah, Edgerton Farms Estate, Section 4 is a final plat. So unlike the previous subdivision, this is the last of the process. They have completed their improvements. Um, the, um, excuse me. There are 56 lots within this subdivision on about 45 acres. If you're familiar with the area, it's on Fields Road, um, right, kind of backs into the existing Edgerton Farms. That existing phase comes in off of Nahuna Road. This one will connect in to Edgerton Farms, the existing phases and come back in off of Fields Road. So you'll be able to cut through, uh, one end to the other of that subdivision with two accesses. They do have a built-to-standards letter from DOT, so the road is in. It does meet DOT's minimum construction standards. The planning board has reviewed this and does recommend approval.
Berry. Is all the paperwork being signed on it? 25-foot easement that goes back to the solar property owner? Off of Fields Road?
Let me see here. Trying to locate that. On here.
If you're going out of the street, uh, onto Fields Road, it should be on the right-hand side.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yep. So that will be there.
So that's, that's all documented?
It is.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item is a, uh, resolution to adopt Resolution 2024 on Board of Commissioners to accept an ARPA grant of $182,000 for pre-construction planning for the Wayne County, uh, Wayne Executive Jet Port Pump Station and Sanitary Sewer Main improvements. So the grant we applied for or that the, uh, airport consulting engineers applied for and we were successful in getting. So we would need acceptance and adopt in this resolution so we can receive that money. Any questions on that? Make any questions? All right. Now, moving on to number nine is a motion to adopt a resolution for a building reuse grant for Project Grain and an appropriate budget amendment. This is by Julie Graham, existing industry, uh, director. And this is a, uh, a building reuse grant for an existing industry that is expanding here. It has been announced. I'm not sure if it has or not.
It's, that's the one. That's the one that we.
I'm not sure if it's announced or not.
It came out in.
Oh, did it? So Coker's Mill, I think it's announced. We weren't, you know, if the governor doesn't announce it, you're not supposed to speak about it.
He announced it and we've done the quotes, but I hadn't seen it in.
All right, got you. So that is a, a good news for that business and we're tickled to death for them. Any other questions on that one? That's straightforward. Uh, the next one is a motion to permit the Wayne County Human Resources Department to apply for the youth build grant offered by the U.S. Department of Labor. I think our HR director is here. She'd like to speak on it, give a little more detail.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A few weeks ago, Ginger and Tim, uh, our grant writer, let me know about this grant opportunity and, uh, asked if we would be interested in overseeing it, and we are. So we're asking permission to be able to move forward with, um, writing, you know, the proposal for the grant. It's a little bit detailed. It's quite an undertaking. My department, as far as I know, has never done anything like this before, but I have confidence that we've got everything that we need to be able to do what needs to be done in order to make sure everything's taken care of. The grant is, uh, for $1.5 million and requires a lot of inner community, um, services and partnerships, um, which we've already established.
Sarah, what exactly does the grant do?
So this grant, um, focuses on opportunity youth. And these are youth who have high risks for, um, dropping out of school or have already dropped out of school or, um, have some, um, some legal issues and it's kind of created barriers for them to be able to re-enter the workforce. So this is for ages of 16 to 24. And what I would like to do is kind of integrate it with our current summer youth employment program to be able to integrate some of those funds and those processes that we already use for the last couple of years to forward that for an entire year. The, the grant is a 40-month grant. It's a four-month, um, planning period. Thirty-six months, I believe, of 24 months of the actual services and then a 12-month follow-up period. So, um, we would like to do a cohort, at least two cohorts, one each year, to have those services provided for those youth. It would require a little bit of an expansion, uh, expansion of our current summer youth employment program. Right now, I think we're only doing 16 to 20 years old. So this would increase the age a little bit. But that is a requirement of the Department of Labor to be able to use this grant.
And who's the grant with?
Department of Labor.
Am I misunderstanding this or am, have I got it right? That basically our summer youth program that we currently have, which I think is a six-week program, we would be expanding that for an entire year?
For two years.
Two years?
Yes.
And then you would expand also the age?
Yes.
But it would be two groups per se or two classes? It wouldn't be the same people. It won't always be through the two years. It'd be a year deal and a year deal.
That's correct. So they'd be, they'd come in on the summer youth employment program and then the people who would already qualify, would qualify as well for this part would continue on for a whole, up to a whole year.
Right, right.
Um, and then this grant would, you know, we would use other community partners to teach, um, skills such as construction and IT. Those are the two areas that we're focusing on. Um, and when I say construction, it's not just the carpentry portion of it. It's, you know, the electrical, the plumbing, HVAC, anything to do with construction. And we know those areas are struggling to, to find employees right now. So we think this is a good, a good way to encourage people to get into those trades.
What is the anticipated enrollment under this program?
We're looking at 25, I think.
Okay.
Each year.
Each year.
And that may be adjusted depending on how, how far we can stretch those funds, obviously.
So you would take our basic, um, enrollment, add 25 additional, and those 25 would go for the entire year?
Correct.
Okay, that's great. That's good. Okay.
Any other questions?
Look, I applaud you for reaching out and actually, uh, applying for the grant. I think it's a great thing.
I do too.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Sarah. Good program. Uh, of course, she's asking for your permission again to apply for those grant funds before she does, so. The last item is, uh, we're moving on to new business. We have, um, a discussion and motion to approve your budget retreat date or dates. I'm not sure how you handle that or.
So, so date-wise, we'll have it at the Maxwell Center, I assume. The, the last week of, uh, January or the first full week of February, which one suits y'all better?
This is a retreat for the, the board, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir. Yeah, our annual budget planning, budget and planning.
And you're anticipating this for two days? We normally schedule book for two days, but we normally complete it in one.
Right. So you want to have it on Friday?
That's good with me.
Um, so y'all want to do the 31st and the 1st?
Of February?
I ain't got my phone. Till what now?
The January 31st.
31st of January and 1st of February.
Yeah.
Just check for the availability and get that out.
All right. What days of the week is that?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Of course, we'll have breakfast and lunch available with those.
All right, let's get it. Let's, let's do a, uh, let's do an alternate date then.
What's, what was those dates again?
January 31st and February the 1st.
We should be able to get it accommodated in one of those rooms. It does, it just requires a sign.
Right, okay. That'll work. We'll just do it then.
Yes, sir. If we need, if we need alternates, I'll come back to you, but we should be okay.
All right. And that's a Wednesday and a Thursday.
Yes, sir. And then, any other questions on that? Then the next item is to, you will recess the Board of Commissioners and, uh, convene the Board of Adjustments to establish a public hearing on February the 6th, 2024 at 9:30 a.m. to receive public comment on a special use permit for Hackberry Solar Energy Facility. After doing so, you will, uh, close the Board of Adjustments meeting and reopen, reconvene the Board of Adjust, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting. And then we will go into our county commissioner, public comments speaking time.
So let me ask you a question. Do we, do we, uh, uh?
You'll actually recess.
Recess the Board of Adjustments?
Yes, sir. And then reconvene the Board of Commissioners. Yes, sir.
And public comments?
Then you'll move on to public comments. County managers report, Board of Commissioners committee reports. Go into, I don't.
We have anything else?
No, no closed session today.
I got one thing.
Okay, we'll have one thing for closed session and then after that we'll adjourn.
We can do that now if we want to. I mean, it won't take long. All right, have a motion to go into closed session to, uh, attorney-client privilege for county's interest.
I should go in closed session.
All in favor? Oh, we're voting here.
This might get an all-clear from Joel.
I'll call our January 2, 2024 meeting, nine o'clock meeting to order. Um, I just want to wish, I hope everybody had a happy new year. That everybody's here. I know we've had a little sickness around us, but uh, we're all on the mend. Uh, little thing we're gonna kind of um, put in place this year. Uh, if you're here and we have to evacuate the building, half the uh, room. Going to go to the left, half of them is going to go to the right. I'm gonna take the right, Kara's gonna take the left. We're gonna get you to the evacuation point and then Chip and I will sweep the floor and we'll be the last ones out. We hope we don't have to do that, but just in case we do. Uh, I also asked Dave to either be here or have somebody here in case we have a medical emergency in the uh, uh, while we're in sessions that he can attend to it. Uh, so. All that being said, uh, Ms. Barbara, uh, you have our invitation.
All right, Ms. Bauerhead, please. Lord, may we gain compassion and understanding for you so that we may shine your love and light in the dark world as we leave the old behind and embrace the new with you. Help us not only remember the hardships of the past year, but also the wonderful memories. I pray that we may not only embrace the good in the new year, but learn lean on you when hard times eventually come. We love and trust you with all our hearts. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
All right, amen. Mr. Foster has the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, before I say the pledge, I would like, I would like to send condolences to Commissioner Williams and the Hamilton family. The passing of his father, um, I think it was Saturday. Um, he was unable to be here today because he's in New York attending his father's funeral.
I pray to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We, um, and we were unaware of the passing of Commissioner Williams. Uh, Father said we'll reach out, uh, after the meeting. I appreciate you letting us know about that. Uh, I entertain a motion, uh, to approve the minutes of the December 19, 2023 meeting.
Save a vote.
All please cast your vote. Uh, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, adjusted agenda, Mr. Crockler.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to remove item six under the consent and put it under new business. Um, it would be a new business item and, uh, number 12. Uh, that would be to convene the Board of Adjustments to establish a public hearing on February the 6th, uh, 2024 at 9:30. And then you would need to recess that board and reconvene the Board of Commissioners. That's one item. A second item would be to add Budget Amendment 264 to item number three under the consent. Uh, that is for the purchase of a vehicle. And then also, under the consent, add item 11, which is our 2472 transitions, uh, uh, for EMS Station 7, Medic 7, uh, to 2472 from the Kelly schedule. And that would be continued upon County Manager and Finance Office, uh, taking another look at their, uh, collectibles. Uh, pending that. And that is the only changes I have, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the adjusted agenda? Sir move? If you would cast your vote.
Yeah, yes.
It'll be there. I just didn't say it's sorry.
All right, thank you. All right, on to budget amendments.
Uh, going, having gone over the consent agenda in our eight o'clock briefing, I would ask for you, uh, for approval of that consent.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
All in favor, please cast your vote. All right, thank you. Uh, on to new business.
Item number 11, uh, Mr. Chair, is a discussion and motion to approve the budget retreat dates.
All right, so we have come up with January 31st and January, February the 1st. We have Wednesday and a Thursday.
That is correct. We'll let you know just as soon as we get confirmation from the Maxwell Center.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to approve those dates? Attended the confirmation from the Maxwell Center.
Save a vote.
Please cast your vote. All right, thank you. Okay, I need a motion to recess the Board of, do I have a motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll recess the Board of Commissioners, uh, meeting and reconvene the Board of Adjustments uh, to discuss the.
This is to establish a Board of Adjustments public hearing on February the 6th, 2024 at 9:30 a.m. to receive public comment on a special use permit request for Hackberry Solar Energy Facility.
Mr. Chairman, a move that we established February the 6th at, uh, 9 a.m. for a public hearing to receive public comments on a special use permit for Hackberry Solar Energy Facility.
All right. All in favor, can we vote on it? We got to vote by hand.
She has it already up there so you can vote on your, um, surfaces.
All please cast your vote.
Who made that motion?
Uh, now let me clarify that, sir, that that was at 9:30, not 9 a.m.
Excuse me, 9:30?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. I'll, uh, recess the Board of Adjustments and reconvene the Board of Commissioners. Got it right, first thing.
Yep.
All right, we'll move into our public comments. Do we have anybody sign up?
Do we have anybody on that sheet out there, Brian?
No, sir, we did not.
All right, uh, I want you to County Manager to report.
Thanks, sir. I'd like to wish, hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and looking forward to a happy new year. Uh, get back to business and get back to working, uh, starting our, uh, budgeting process here, starting off with our uh, departments already working on their CIP programs. We'll be having our budget retreat. We'll get prepared for that and we'll have an agenda out hopefully, uh, soon, as soon as possible. Um, also warn everybody, COVID's still out there. It's easy to catch. I call it for the fourth time over Christmas. It's no fun, so please protect yourselves and, um, uh, that, uh, just that public message to our, our staff and to the public. And that's all I have.
All right, uh, Commissioner Doherty.
Well, we got a new year and I'm excited about it and I wish everybody a great, uh, new year. And I really am sad to hear of the passing of Commissioner Williams's father. And hopefully we'll reach out to him and send our condolences. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Aco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as Commissioner Doherty just said, I sent our condolences out to Commissioner Williams in the passing of his father, uh, who I was not aware of it, but thank Mr. Foster for bringing it to our attention. And, uh, also, uh, like to wish everyone a happy new year. I think all of us during the holidays either had COVID or the flu or a bad cold. And I had one on, but I don't know which one it was. I do know it was not COVID because I got tested and it was negative. But, uh, there was a lot of sickness going around at Christmas and I hope it didn't spoil everybody's Christmas plans. Uh, but again, uh, this is a new year. We've got some challenges ahead of us. Uh, but we've, uh, had challenges in the past and we've overcome them. And, uh, as everyone knows, our primary goal up here is to provide services to the citizens of Wayne County. And, uh, you know, we're not perfect. We make mistakes sometimes, but, uh, just bear with us and we're gonna try to make the right decisions this coming year for all of the citizens of Wayne County. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Aco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like all the rest, oh, we wish the best for Commissioner Father's death. I mean, that's a bad time during the holidays. Anytime's a bad time, but it seems like it's one of the worst times during the holidays. And also I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year. Hope it's better than 2023 because we've had a lot of trials and tribulations during 23. And I pray for our nation, which is very important because I think it needs all the prayers that we can put forth. Because, uh, each time I look at the news, I get more distressed at what we're going through in the mindset of our country and everything. So let's look at 2024 as a positive year and hopefully a happy year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Foster.
Um, I would just like to say happy new year to everyone and like a few of the other commissioners said and also County Manager, um, please be careful. COVID is out, flu is out, cold is out. I've also heard a stomach virus. So it's, it's a couple of different things been going around during the holidays and when we gather together like that, it's easily spread it. So please be careful and take care of yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. As all has said, um, we send our condolences to Commissioner Williams. Uh, we, um, sometimes it might just be perceived that we don't get along sometimes, but we're all a family and, uh, when one hurts, we all hurt. Uh, the, um, uh, I'd like to wish everyone a happy new year. Uh, I think 2024, we hope is gonna be a good year. Um, it is an election year, so sometimes things, uh, can go awry sometimes, but maybe not just go around. Um, uh, then the last thing I want to do, we've had a, I was at an event this past weekend. Um, the SCA, uh, was here in town, uh, Great Sausers and Rubs, Ralph Legrand. Um, hosted it at his shop, Bucks Fire Extinguishers, which is one of our vendors for the county. Uh, hosted at his shop, um, Friday, Saturday and, uh, Sunday and Monday. Uh, they had a judging competition, a judging class on Friday night and they had cooks on Saturday, Sunday and Monday. Uh, all grades of you name it. It's a state cook-off association, but they had to go with other different things as an add-on. Uh, a lot of people from Pennsylvania, Maryland, uh, Texas, um, they were from everywhere, you know, North Carolina and Wayne County. We got Wayne County cooks, uh, that competed. Um, some of y'all know the Smokehouse, Freddie Ellison, his crew, Ralph's, uh, crew at Great Sausers and Rubs. Um, we had, uh, one from, uh, Salston Fire Department that, that, uh, that won. Uh, some from Seven Springs, Sandy Bottom that won. But, um, the one I'm highlighting is a, uh, is a county employee. Uh, Jason Baker, which is our chief, um, inspection. Uh, man, I know he walked four times yesterday. He got his gold ticket Friday, uh, Saturday night. I didn't go Sunday. I don't know how many times he won Sunday. But he's, uh, he's a cooking machine and, and one of those ancillaries, as they call it, like a side deal. Yesterday he had to do something with collards. So he had to think outside the box. So he, uh, he made, uh, collards, neck bone, cream cheese, egg, uh, egg roll. And I said, uh, And I said, and I pulled up, and I, we'd, we'd already eaten, and I pulled up, he said, he put some stuff on, he said, he said, Chris, come here, try this right here. And I'm like, I looked at that thing, I said, hm. Momma, I tell you what, that thing was good. I mean, it was anyplace with that as well. So I just want to, to say congratulations to Jason and, and all the ones in Wayne County that won. It was a big, it was a big boost to Wayne County's economy because there were 72 cooks each day except the last day, where some of them had to leave and go, someone had to be back to work, they were out of town. So you imagine the hotels, the restaurants, the shopping that, that some of them did while they were here. So that's a, I just want to say thank you to Ralph. That's a big thing, and they're coming back. So that's something that we might have to find a bigger place for them to, to compete in. But it's probably one of the biggest ones that there was in North Carolina. And we had yesterday, they had the, the first perfect cook. Perfect, as they grade them, first, he was from Pennsylvania, but first perfect cook. Also, Bruce Newsom, which is with the Smokehouse crew, which I grew up with, he's from Eureka. He was the North Carolina total points champion for 2023. So I just want to say a shout-out to, to them, and I thank all those for coming. Chip, you got?
We say they got a golden ticket. I mean, that would be in to compete at a national level.
That's correct, which is in Texas. Yep, which is in March, I think. So we've got, in fact, I think everybody from the Smokehouse crew, Jason, and two more, I think, has got to go on ticket to go. So we got, we got well represented from Wayne County.
And our, and our county employee.
Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, I missed my invitation for that.
Well, I don't think it was an invitation, it was just like an inside thing, but I can tell you what, I tried, I tried probably 19 different seasons of steak cooked. Don't be eating steak for a while. So is he making anything else? All right, I was gonna, we were gonna do the fastest meeting ever in 2024, but I think we still succeeded, right?
So far.